Good morning. Today is February, February, I apologize, already I'm starting wrong. Good morning. It is Friday, January 7th, 2022, and we are here for a workshop. And a pre-board, pre-organization workshop part two as well. The time is 11:04. I think that we have, Ms. Patrick, are you on the phone? Two of our board members are running behind, so they will be joining us shortly. Today, we also have Dr. Carlin sitting in for the superintendent, Ken Savage, who may have been exposed, so for precaution measures, she will be sitting in for him today. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. McClung, so we can begin our meeting. Good morning.
My light's red. Oh, there we go. Just took a minute to wake up. Thank you. Good morning. Welcome, board members, and now Dr. Carlin and board attorney. Happy to be with you again this morning to complete our work that we began back in November, actually, on our reorganization and the protocol manual. So we'll start this morning by a quick review of the agenda. So today, we will go over the protocol items. I've sent the protocol manual out revised with some of the changes that were suggested last, last year, the end of the year. And we have a couple of other items that we did not get to address there, such as the Code of Ethics for school board members, replacing the standards for school board member boardmanship. Then we'll move on to the article assignments. Yes, Ms. Fisher?
I'm having a hard time understanding you.
I'm a long way from, from you. So is it okay if I take this down?
You're fine, thank you.
Okay. I'll take this off, since I'm, I'm way more than six feet from anyone. Thank you. So, once we finish the protocol item review, then we will also talk about the article assignments for the board member assignments. And then we'll talk about the briefing and workshop dates and days. And there's been some discussion about whether to have one board meeting per month rather than two, so we'll have that discussion as well. And at that time, when we've completed all of that work, then you have your superintendent search discussion also this morning. So quite a busy day ahead of us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll start out with the protocol items, and I'm going to switch over to the protocol And the first item was a simple one, to change the name of the superintendent, so that's been done. You'll notice the changes are in red.
Ms. McClung, may I ask, when will this go, be permanent? I mean...
Well, it's never really permanent. It's more of a, of a living document.
The changes of the name. And the reason I'm asking that, you know, because of superintendent change? And then do we go back and re-change it again? Or is it our first, and then we see it again?
We'll just change it again. When the superintendent changes, we'll change that. And then we'll, after today, if there's agreement on the items, we'll go ahead and post this to Board Docs, the updated version. And then when we make changes, we just change it and update the new version on Board Docs.
Perfect, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, thank you. It's taking a minute to get to where our changes were. So, when we talked last time, one of the changes that was requested was that, was related to the distribution of campaign materials. There was a request to add that materials could not be sent through the district email system, so you'll see that that has been added. And I'm having trouble seeing my page numbers, but it is under the correspondence from board members page.
It's seven, page seven.
Thank you, page seven. So that was the first change made. Any disagreement with that? We're all good with that. Okay, thank you. Okay, the meetings of the school...
Do you have a question?
I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, isn't that in our policy?
It is.
I believe it is in policy, so it's now in a compliance with the policy. It's in alignment with the policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item, there are several items under the expectations of board members. The first one was around the presentation, I'm sorry, around the intent to introduce a new item for consideration or a motion. So, we were asked to include 24 hours in advance for a memo of the intent to introduce a new item before briefing meetings. If there is not enough time to send an advance memo, new items should be brought up during the good-of-the-order section of the meeting. The additional new language is, "If possible, confer in advance with the board attorney in order to clarify motion verbiage. If necessary, a board member may ask for a brief recess during a meeting in order to confer with the board attorney about proper motion verbiage." Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I have some questions about that last sentence. Okay, so let's clarify a scenario. We're talking about a board member, so in other words, the whole board would recess and one board member would talk with the attorney while the rest is in recess.
That was my understanding last time, that if there was a question about how the motion should be worded, and the board member and board attorney felt that they needed to have that discussion, then the board would recess for a brief time, say for five minutes, while that was discussed.
All right, now, that, it is not clear here, if, because I've seen it two different ways. It, this is not clear that it would be, let's say, the person making the motion.
Okay.
That's one thing. But, the way it reads here, it sounds like any board member could ask, and, and we've had that scenario, where we've had someone call for a recess and talk with the board attorney. So, I don't like that sentence, because I don't think it's, it's clear. I don't have a problem with the board attorney conferring with the person making the motion, albeit that person might have done better to talk ahead of time on it. But, the way it is now, it says, "if necessary, a board member."
Right.
And do you see what I'm saying? It sounds like any board member, and I object to that verbiage.
So would revising that to say, "if necessary, the board member making the motion may request, may ask for a brief recess?"
Would it be, I mean, I, I'd like our attorney to weigh in on this also, because it seems to me, when there's been a problem, it's been the attorney that honed in on something that's problematical. So, if, if we could, through the board chair, have, um...
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Pre-Bruno?
I think it's helpful if a, a member is making a motion, and they would like some assistance with drafting that motion, that I can help them, because sometimes the motions are a little convoluted and not really clear. So I think that's the intent of this language, is to allow that board member who's making the motion to have an opportunity to clarify, so that all of the board members, when it comes before them, understand what they're discussing and voting on.
So, as Mr. Pre-Bruno just stated, the board member who is making the motion, as you said, Ms. Vaughn.
But it could go either way. Does that allow you, miss, or, or maybe it would just be through your own suggestion that you might weigh in and, and say something like, "Well, do you mean here?" Or, I mean, how, I, I'm just trying to think of the scenarios that would come up. And, and thinking of prior scenarios, we've, we've had motions that are not straightforward or not clear, and I'm thinking that, you know, if, if not, you, you wouldn't be calling a recess, obviously. It would be the board member making...
Would request it through the chair.
Okay, I, I just, I know I'm going around in a circle, but I, I just want to be clear on it. So, yeah, that's where I would like to see it.
Okay.
And then that would also, right, give them the opportunity to have it written, as we've been asking, have it written, so that way there's no confusion. And then, Ms. Morgan, I know you had your hand up?
Yes, I did. Line two, it says, "during briefing meetings." It should say, "regular meetings."
I'm sorry?
The second, it, it says, "the intent to introduce a new, new item during briefing meetings." That should be regular meetings. Where is that?
All meetings, line two.
Line two in that same bullet?
It's in black, it's not red.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Action meetings, okay.
Action meetings.
Thank you.
Should it be all meetings, or just action meetings?
And that's why, another reason I raised the question.
I believe it was, it was previously briefing meetings. The only new language in that was the 24 hours in advance. And I believe that was, that the request, the original request was that any motions be brought forward during a briefing meeting, but that members be given an advance notice so that they had time to review it.
Okay, so I'm, I had understood us to intend 24-hour advance notice to a board meeting if there's going to be a motion. And this is saying that the motion has to be brought during the briefing meeting, when we review the agenda, which doesn't make, yeah, is that what we want?
Ladies, I, I have to agree with Ms. Morgan, because I, I think this originally initiated because of action meetings. But I, I would think there would be all meetings. Ms. Chivinelli?
Well, my, my problem is, in a perfect world, that would be great, but it's not a perfect world, so, um, you know?
Is it?
So, I, I don't know how you can, I mean...
Well, it says, "if possible." I think all of this, it will intent.
Right, I understand, but I mean, sometimes in the briefing meeting, things come out, but at that point, it's not a motion. It, it actually comes out the next day, because of conversations that we had, maybe during the, the briefing, or the, you know, the, uh, rev, uh, agenda review. So, I, I'm, I just, you know, I had, I hate to put, box us in. That's where I'm, that's, that's my point. I hate to box us in. Thank you.
So perhaps we take off that whole, maybe it says, "notify members 24 hours in advance via memo of the intent to introduce a new item," period. And then, "if there is not enough time to send advance memo, new items should be brought up during good-of-the-order."
Does that work for, for...
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
I'm a little confused by the whole entire thing, because there are often occasions when discussion at a briefing or an action meeting might lead to a motion that was not planned on 24 hours before. So I don't know why we are increasing our protocols when we, first of all, have all of our policies that address these issues. And second of all, it makes it more cumbersome and confusing. I, I just...
Muddy in the waters.
Just suggesting that, you know, we should try to keep things simple and clear, and, and as least complicated as possible. But this, to me, is, you know, adding more things to remember. We already have our policies and the protocols, I believe, were intended to reflect things that we agreed that we would do as a, as a unique body, whichever board it happens to be at the time. So I'm, I'm just suggesting that we might want to try to streamline it a little bit.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
Basically, I agree with Ms. Fisher. However, we have found ourselves in a situation that, you know, to me, when I first came on the board, my mind was, "What are protocols?" They are the, the way that we do things, I mean, to make it really simplistic. And we find ourselves now, we're, we're going to be talking about a protocol for board member messages, something that was the way we did things for years and years, correct? And yet, here, all of a sudden, we get, you know, there's, there's the message, when there's a bit of a hubbub about a, a recent situation, well, you don't have a protocol for that. So, while I agree, and I, I use Ms. Chivinelli's, "In a perfect world, we would respect the traditional protocols." It seems like more and more, for every little thing, if we don't have a protocol, somebody's going to come back and bite us you-know-where and say, "Well, you have no protocol for that." So, I'd rather be safe than sorry. I'd rather have some cumbersome than nothing and then get caught.
Thank you.
Okay, so, with this, Ms., Ms. McClung, so where do you want us to go back to, then?
Okay, so, let's first come to agreement on the first sentence. "Notify board members 24 hours in advance via memo of the intent to introduce a new item," period. "If there is not enough time to send an advance memo, new items should be brought up during the good-of-the-order section of the meeting." Do we have agreement on that piece?
And then that solves the non-perfect world.
Okay, then the second part is, "if possible, confer in advance with the board attorney in order to clarify motion verbiage. If necessary," which would be, if, if there's not 24 hours' notice, "the board member making the motion may ask for a brief recess during a meeting in order to confer with the board attorney about proper motion verbiage." Could I get a thumbs up if you are okay with that language? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, we will make those changes. Okay, the next bullet item discusses being courteous listeners and speakers. The new language says, "During workshop and briefing discussions, the chair will provide each board member four minutes for initial comments and two minutes for follow-up comments. Strive to keep end-of-meeting board member comments to 10 minutes per person." And I remember there was quite a bit of discussion about this at our last meeting, and it's not like someone is going to be pulled off with the cane if they go over by, you know, by a minute. But these were the general guidelines that everyone agreed to in, in terms of time. Any discussion around those?
No. I think...
Okay, a thumbs up if everyone's okay with that language.
I just guess who's, I'm wondering who's got the cane.
Ms. Fisher, are you in agreement? Thank you. Okay, so we had four, and I can live with it. Thank you. Okay, so that one is okay. The next change is further down, almost at the end, oh, and I haven't, I've been doing it in my book and not pulling it up, I'm sorry.
Page nine.
Okay. So the next item has to do with consensus. The language says, "Work to come to consensus. During workshops and briefings, board members may be asked to come to consensus on some decisions, such as whether to ask staff to move forward with gathering information or other items that do not require an action vote at that time. Thumbs will be used to indicate agreement. A thumbs up is yes, you agree with the statement. Thumb sideways, can live with it, which counts as a yes. Thumb down means no and disagree with the statement. If full consensus, all thumbs up or sideways cannot be reached, majority will be used as the fallback." Any discussion around that?
Maybe, hold on.
Oh.
Gathering other items.
What? Ms. Vaughn?
I'm looking at the semicolon between "information" and "or." I'm just rereading it to myself to make sure I'm not misreading. I don't know why we have the semicolon. Is that another...
It's a colon, I mean, it's a comma in mine. Did it come up as a semicolon?
Oh, I may be looking at, I'm looking at a slightly different version. But do we need a comma? Why is there a comma? Move forward with gathering information or other items.
We can remove the comma.
I mean, we don't really, we don't need, it's not a series of things, it's two things, this or that, right?
Perfect, we'll take that comma out.
Yeah, because I'm looking at a slightly different version.
Any other discussion on that? Ms. Chivinelli?
Real quick, I, do I remember an email coming from the board attorney regarding this?
Yes. Yes.
Can you remind us what that was?
About the consensus?
Yes, I think.
Or when to use consensus?
Yes.
I think there was a, there may have been an email of caution to make sure that consensus is only being used for non-action-related items, so that was one thing. And consensus to be used to direct your employees to do something and to move something along, so long as, if it's going to be an actionable item, that obviously the formal vote is taken at an action meeting.
It was more administrative, is what I was thinking.
Yeah, consensus is not a vote, so it's, it is more administrative, and that's why whenever you're making a decision to formalize that decision as a board, you need to have your action vote.
Thank you.
And then I think the other thing was, as well, to try to use consensus in the true way it's meant to be used, which is to try to get your board members, you know, find out why they're voting sideways or thumbs down, to see if you can actually build a true consensus, where you can have six or seven board members on board versus four or three. I mean, four or, or four or five.
So any change to the language, other than the, the... Any change to the language, other than the addition of the comma? Okay, if we can have a thumbs up, if you're in agreement, thank you. The last bullet there had to do with the district logo, was be sure to differentiate between statements made as an individual and those made on behalf of the board, particularly when wearing or displaying the district logo. Any comments around that?
The only comment that I have, even if when someone says, "I am speaking on my behalf as an individual," but then as we speak, the word "we" is used, that just put us right back into the "us" versus the "I." And I don't know how we make sure that that does not happen. It's because it's coming, it's verbal.
And I don't know that that's a protocol as much as just a monitoring of yourself, because I think we all tend to fall into habits where we say "we" when we really mean "I."
Right.
So maybe a reminder, you know, write yourself a note or even as you're speaking, when you begin speaking, please remember I'm speaking for myself, not as the board, even if I slip into the verbiage of "we," what I really mean is my opinion. Yes.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Comments?
Is there any other comments regarding this?
Welcome, Ms. Gittens. Okay, thumbs up if we're okay with this language. Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Ms. Fisher?
I'm sorry.
Are you okay with it? Thank you. I just couldn't see your thumb. Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Gittens, we've been reviewing the changes that were made to protocol based upon some of this discussion at our last meeting. So, we're moving on.
What was the last?
Page nine.
The last page was page nine.
Page nine.
And I believe those may have been the only changes that were made. Let me double check. Oh, now I take that back. Take that back. Page 17, Board Member Presentations. So on page 17, referring to presentations that board members would like to give during their comment time at the end of a meeting, there was change made that instead of one hour for photos or graphics to be dropped into the shared folder, the decision was made for 24 hours. Any discussion around that?
And I believe that we had had quite a bit of conversation on this one as well.
You sure did.
Anyone have any comments on this, page 17?
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I mean, I understand that to give them time, but I don't understand. It's just a matter of dropping it in and it being put up. I, if things happen at the last minute, then are we saying that you can't show something if they didn't get it 24 hours in advance? And if it's in the folder, to me, when it's time to present it, they just, you know, click on it and put it up, or else we could have a computer that is compatible on the end that we can just show it ourselves if they don't have the ability to do it in the back. I just, I don't know. I just don't see why we're being so restrictive about it, but it's up to the board.
Ms. Vaughn, please?
Yeah, I think the thing that's confusing here is the word presentations, because when I think of a presentation, I think of something that's going to last perhaps at least five minutes and goes through various steps and has a PowerPoint or something akin to a PowerPoint attached to it versus, let's say, a member goes out to a school and observes, you know, something great that happens and takes a couple photos and says, I was, I mean, that's a huge difference. And it does say to include photos, text, graphics, but I don't necessarily see the problem with if it's just a photo or two, but perhaps somebody from that department might, communications might say why it might be necessary to have the photos in advance as well. I don't know.
My recollection from the meeting was not that communications asked for that, but that the board said, well, if we have presentations, which is further down in number four, that those, the communications department had asked for those 24 hours in advance because anything that included a video or a PowerPoint, they wanted to be sure that they had everything set up for it. Originally, we did have the one hour for pictures, and it was the board members who made that suggested change. It was not communications asking for that.
Right, and I think that you cannot just read, number one, you must read the rest of it because it all ties in together. Ms. Gittens?
Well, the problem is just what Ms. McClung said. You know, if the people that are actually doing the work can do it within that timeframe and have not complained, why would the board, what is the premise behind the board saying, "We shouldn't do it"? I don't understand that.
I think, and I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I think the fact is that they're not going to tell us, no. They're just not going to tell us. And we know how shorthanded everybody is, and it's just out of respect, because whatever we ask of anyone, they are going to try their hardest to do and make sure that that's completed. So, do we want to put that undue burden on them if we do not have to? I mean, if something comes up and it is like an extreme emergency or it's, we didn't even think about it, I think that's a different occasion, but to make a habit of something like that or to think that, I think that's where we came to this conclusion.
May I?
Please, Ms. Gittens.
So where we started with this was that I did a 12 slide, and it was called a presentation during my time during the board meeting, which is by statute allowed. And many of the board members objected to me doing it, called it a presentation, and decided that we would make a protocol to stop that in the future. It was in on time. It was during my time. I just don't think we need to do this overkill just because I did what was stated as a presentation. And it's not consistently that people are late. We have the folder. We give it to the secretaries. They put it in. I really worry about protocoling and legalizing everything we do. Every time there's something, we start with something else. I think it's overkill, and I think that we have the process, that if it's a lengthy thing or whatever, that you've got the, you know, the time to do it. And I don't think anybody abuses that. So, that's my opinion of it.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, Ms. Gittens, you came in right after comments that I made in response to Ms. Fisher about a similar topic that Ms. Fisher brought up about every little thing and all. And what I said then, and I think it applies to this, is we've gotten in the situation that even though our protocols, the way we normally traditionally do things have worked, it seems like it's gotten to the point where whenever something happens and there's a protest or somebody says something against it, well, you don't have a protocol on it. And I think this, it's not your particular presentation, although you may see it that way. What I think is a problem is, and I understand what Chair Jordan said, well, you have to read through the whole thing, but to me, it's confusing because it seems to me that it's, you know, what is a presentation? To me, a presentation, as I used before, as I said before, is not just putting in a photo or two. That's not a presentation. That's, you're talking about something you did or something that's important, a sign, a special sign a school put up, and you take a picture of it. I don't see the problem with an hour unless communications has a reason that, you know, we can't do. But if you go down to the videos and the PowerPoints and such, those present a different problem for communication because ensure the PowerPoints on the projector, the screens and blah, blah. And I guess it's even harder with video to make sure, because we've had technical problems in the past. So, I don't know. To me, it's confusing the way it's laid out because it seems like we're defining a presentation up above. Number one, it could be just a photo or a graphic. For instance, maybe when I was doing the mask thing, where we were collecting masks, and I might have chosen here. Here's the list of things as I'm saying it so people can see it. And, I mean, you know, things like that. If you want to go learn more information, here. Here's the website, and here's the logo of it versus a video, a PowerPoint, because those do require. So, if it were me to make it less confusing, I would make it less confusing because creating, you know, we're talking about creating the desired presentation, which is important, but a picture isn't, to me, a picture or two or one graphic is not a presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Can we just say, instead of completed board presentations, something to the effect of any media presentations by board members so that then you're required to, then you have to go down and look below for the specifics?
Separate that. Ms. Gittens, I seen you had your hand up?
No, never mind.
So, I agree. So, if we separate that presentation, maybe that would be number two. That, thank you, Ms. Vaughn, for doing that, because when I reread it again, that made more sense. So, if we did that and took that out of the picture part and made that the presentation issue, because then they have to go through and do the run-through and make sure that everything is ready to share without the delay. So, that I think may be a good idea as well. Ms. Gittens?
And let me just say, technically, all we would need is to have access to the computer on the end. It's connected to the system. You hit play, and it's up there. There is not something that has to go through all the, I mean, you can do it and send it to them, and they put it up in the back. The simplistic technology way is to have access to the computer on the end, and we just hit play on our stuff.
Okay, so...
I still, I just think we're making it way too complicated.
I believe the problem has been that sometimes when things come up, there's no sound. We have problems, I know we've had several issues where we've had technical difficulties when they've been on the computer and still couldn't get the sound through. That's why they've asked for the advance notice to make sure that they're not wasting time during a meeting trying to get the graphics, I'm sorry, not the graphics, the sound and the pictures to match.
And then are you just talking about a presentation? Because photos, what do you have to do?
No, that's what Ms. Vaughn had just mentioned and Ms. Morgan just mentioned, I just mentioned. I'm sure these lovely ladies over to my right will have something to share with that as well, but that's what we said, separate the presentation part of that from photos.
So I'm hearing that the first part would refer specifically to photos, text, or graphics that could be dropped in an hour ahead of time. And then presentations, we would still ask for 24 hours advance notice so that they can make sure that the videos, the sound, and everything is working properly. Correct? Okay.
Ladies, any comments on that?
As much notice as possible.
As much notice as possible, in a perfect world. And Ms. Fisher?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I have a question about the first paragraph on page nine. At the end of the paragraph, strive to keep...
Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, can we finish 17 first so that way, because that's where Ms. McClung...
But it has to do with this, Ms. Jordan. It says to keep it to 10 minutes per person. So, it does have to do with the length of time of the presentations. So, anyway, whatever. I'm done.
Okay, so my understanding is we'll split that out. The other piece that was changed there was that originally there was some wording of tasking a board secretary if the board member needed assistance. And again, there was lengthy discussion last time that each board member would be responsible for creating their desired presentation. And if they needed help, that, you know, that they could certainly ask for assistance from someone, but the language of tasking the secretary was taken out. Any discussion around that?
Ms. Fisher?
So, we have time to speak during meetings, which is now designated. So, at the end of an action meeting or a briefing meeting, we have board member comments. And is this what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Adding pictures or a video or something to our comments?
Yes.
Well, if we're in the 10-minute time span, and we do give as much notice as possible, adequate notice, or prepare our own technical and digital information, what's the difference?
I don't think there was a, I don't think we were discussing the time. It was just whoever, the language was that they could task a secretary and people, the last time the board members had stated that they didn't feel that that was appropriate, that the secretaries would be given that responsibility.
Did the secretaries comment on that?
Right.
Or the office assistants?
I believe it was board member discussion. I don't believe they were involved in that discussion.
Ms. Gittens?
I agree with Ms. Fisher. I mean, we are creating issues that staff has not created. That's just the bottom line. It's the board saying, well, we shouldn't do this and we shouldn't do that. And I know you're going to say, well, we're looking out for the staff so that they're not overwhelmed, but I just think that it would be enough to say to each of us as adults, as elected officials, to please try in the future to not do it at the last minute and tax the staff. I mean, I'd like to ask, how many times has this happened that it creates a policy? How many times does something have to occur that now we need to make policy on?
We're not making a policy here. This is the protocols.
The protocols, okay. The same difference. Anyway.
Anyone else have comments regarding this? And I think it's just tasking them to do the presentation, the whole presentation. So, it's not like you can say, Ms. Thomas, here, make this for me. Come up with this.
I understand what it is.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. Not that they assist us, because they're always there to assist us for everything.
Well, not, this is saying that they can't. This is saying that if you have a presentation, you cannot ask one of the secretaries to help.
Givernelli?
So, I'm going to, I'm going to, this has to do with what we're talking about. Some districts have their, each board member has their own administrative assistant that does, helps them. And so, I think it's important to know that we have, we share two that work very, very hard for seven. And so, yes, I think we're all trying to respect their time. You know, for me, hey, let's just pay them more. Let's show how we feel about them. So, you know, yes, we're trying to have protocols that we don't take advantage, but we're all working. And sometimes, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm going to be the one that would need assistance in making a presentation, but it says it's my responsibility. Well, I'm going to determine how I'm going to be responsible in doing that. I can be very persuasive. So, you know, I may take advantage of it that way. So, I'm just saying, that's how it can be. So, I'm just, thank you and kudos to our secretaries and our assistants because we only have two. two for seven. Thank you.
So, so Ms. Jevon Ellie, so you would advise, your opinion would be to leave that in there so that they can certainly assist?
They may have to.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm pretty busy, so I'm, I need help quite a bit. And I'm like, I'm going to be the first to admit it. So, you know, but I, I haven't done a presentation and I doubt that I will. You know, I, I try to make sure that our meetings are efficient, so I kind of blurt it out as quick as possible to move on for the next person, you know? But that's just how I, how I operate. That's just me. But I don't, and I don't expect anybody to be me. That's why we're all unique and we bring something different to the table. And respecting each other's way of work is really all we need to be doing. And, and that's just what I like to say. Thank you.
And Ms. Fisher?
I just want to say that those presentations or board comments are an opportunity, not only for the public, to learn about what is going on in our district and what, what we're doing to support the students and staff who work for us, but it's also an opportunity for us to learn from one another. And, and I'll just piggyback on Ms. J, Mrs. Jevon Ellie's comment that we are all unique and we all bring something unique and special to the table. And, you know, I mean, I learn every day from my colleagues, so I'm happy to give them the respect to use their time however they see fit to give their message. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
So while I hear you, I think that really, those comments really belong in a workshop or briefing, because when someone presents something at a, in board comments at a regular meeting, we can't respond and have a conversation. That, that's not what board member comments is about. Board member comments is not about opening up a new topic for discussion, unless I'm wrong. You know, to me, it's about providing information to the public, engaging the public, letting each other know what it is that we have done out in the public, et cetera. So it seems to me that, okay, that's what I understand board member comment to be, and I understand what Ms. Fisher said, to be really more a matter of a workshop topic or briefing topic rather than a board member comment.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, so, so briefing and workshops are a time for us to discuss. That's my understanding. And I think that the board member comments really are a report from each one of us about what our individual experiences have been and what is a message that we've received from people in our community that need to be shared with everyone.
Okay, so, Ms. Gittens?
May I ask, through the chair, the attorney in the statute, where it talks about board member comments being whatever the board member chooses to discuss, are there any limitations in the statute that says what we can and cannot say during board member comment?
There's nothing in the statute that dictates what can and can't be said during board member comments. Good of the Order is part of Robert's Rules, and there's nothing in Robert's Rules that either discusses what can and can't be said.
And my point in saying that, too, is that it is, whether we have a procedure or a policy or whatever, it does not overshadow statute, which allows us to speak and say what it is we want to say during that time. So, and, and in response to the fact, well, that could be workshopped, the, when I did the presentation, it was about things that we had discussed. And it was things I had discussed with the board, and it was just the, the data and the findings as to why I said what I did when I did. And I'm not saying it's all about me, but I'm just giving that as an example.
Ma'am, Chair, I could suggest a, a change to that sentence. We could say each board member is responsible for creating the desired presentation and may request assistance if needed. Would that handle it? That way, we're not tasking a secretary to be responsible for it, but certainly can assist as necessary.
I think that-
Okay, then, so, okay, thank you, we'll add that to it.
Thank you, Ms. McClung.
Thank you. Okay. The next item for discussion is around the standards for board members. Let me find the right page.
I think like on 28, when you get down to the-
Second, yes, it's in section 16.
Through the job descriptions, you have that in red where it just says, HR will complete. Oh, those are in red.
I think those were already in red, that-
Oh, okay.
Yes, thank you, sorry. That's part of the, that's the way it comes through on their document.
And just for everybody's knowledge, it's 82 pages. That's why it's taken a minute to go through this.
It is. It's a bit. All those job descriptions take up quite a few pages. And then there's the, there are, this, the self-evaluation is also in here. We have a workshop scheduled to discuss that on Monday, so we won't discuss that today. But there is a piece around standards, requirements, expectations. We're getting there.
I would also ask, like, page 69 and 70, the, the letters that, that, the letters going out to the, the new principals and new assistants, that we have to update that. I don't know if that needs to be changed in here?
Those probably have not been updated since I've been here. So the only, I know for sure that they would need to have the new letterhead on there as part of this, which I'm sure they go out on new letterhead. But if there is, are any language changes that you would like made, we can discuss those while I'm looking for the right page on this other item.
And I would also ask that when we, make sure that, when we send these out, that it is okay with everyone, that everybody's signature is on here, so it is coming from the board. It's congratulating the principals and assistant principals. So I wanted to, to make sure that that was okay, to have everybody's signature on here. 69 and 70, it's the, what, what this is, it's a letter that goes out and it names the person and the school board of Lee County congratulates you in your new position as principal at whatever school that may be, as a newly appointed leader of your school. You have the opportunity to be a great influence on your staff, students, parents, community, in making our schools a success. We look forward to hearing great things about XYZ School. Best wishes for your successful school year sincerely. And then all of our names would be on there, because I really think we need to make sure that these are going out so that they do know that we do care and we are here to support. But I just want to make sure, because I know some board members don't want their names on something, so I want to make sure that that is okay, that all seven names will be put on this letter as they go out. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Great idea.
Ms. Gittens?
There are two different-
One is for, one is for principal, one is for assistant.
For assistant, okay.
Correct. I just want to make sure that, that is adequate, and I know that our administrative assistants, they want to make sure that they're not going to put, send this out on behalf of us without everybody's signature. Mrs. Fisher?
So this is not limited to principals and assistant principals, but maybe would include teacher of the year, support person of the year, and other recognizable achievements?
Whoever we bring in to recognize, I think we need to start sending these out, like, right after they, we approve that, that we send us out immediately. Ms. Gittens?
And can we just be copied when they go out?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, 100%. But, and thank you for allowing us to put signatures on that.
So is there any change required to the language or is simply-
I think the language is, is, it's simple, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it says, it states-
It's pretty straightforward, yes.
Yeah, very straightforward.
Okay, thank you. I figured out why I couldn't find it. It had disappeared behind some words. This is a, a graphic. In the book, it is on page 71. And this is standards for school board member boardmanship. I believe this came from the FSBA. There are several items listed there. You also received the school board ethics, code of ethics for school board members, which has some very similar statements within it. I can switch over to it. So I don't know if you have reviewed those, if you have any discussion about which you prefer. So I'll open that up for discussion.
Just went off line. I'm sorry, Cindy.
Ms. McClung, which?
Which one are we talking about?
The, the code of ethics for school board members. Did you want to have that replace the current standards for school board member boardsmanship? Ms. Morgan?
Go ahead, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I don't think they address the same thing. I think boardsmanship is the expectation for our work and the ethics is really how we do it. But, I mean, to me, they don't read exactly the same, and I would be loath to not have both in there, so.
So at this time, the code of ethics is not in there, so are you suggesting we add that then, rather than replace but have both?
Yes.
Okay? Thank you for the comments.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, it's two totally separate things.
Yeah, they, they are. There's, there's some similarities, but they really address things differently.
Okay, so Ms. Gittens, there's, Ms. McClung is speaking about page 71, which is the standards for school board members' boardsmanship, and then as well as the code of ethics for school board members that we all sign, that we get.
And is that in here?
No, that's what, that's what they were just speaking about. They, they want to switch this. Should that be switched out or add, just add it into here?
I, I kind of would like to see them side by side if that's the case. I mean, are they, did, is that in, is a copy of it here?
Yes, it's in your backup materials.
Yeah.
It's showing on the board right now, on the screen right now, which I know is, it's small.
So we're on to number, this is still in number one, right?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I, I guess, I'm on board docs and I'm not seeing-
Yes, yes, it's in, it's in protocols.
Okay, and the only thing is the protocol manual and then the pre-organization.
Ms. Gittens, if you look on the screen, she's posted it on the screen.
No, I have that.
But we can't see it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Tiny. Can't read it.
Mr. Pre-Bruno?
Just for clarification, the code of ethics for school board members is a sample of something that was recommended. It is from a different district, actually, it's from a different state, it's from Idaho. However, it has a lot of the similar language from the boardsmanship, but as Ms. Morgan was saying, its purpose is different than the boardsmanship. This is something where you are agreeing to abide by these ethics and protocols as part of being a member of the board. That's, that's the purpose of this. And then the boardsmanship guidelines is how you act on the board itself. So there is some slight differences. And this is just a sample and can be tweaked, because this is just a sample.
Ms. Thomas, could we get Ms. Roman ready to make copies or, of this so that, I think, who has this already? Ms. Morgan, you have?
I'm just looking at the one up here.
It's on here, it's digitally here. And what I was going to say, since it's not the same and it is a sample, maybe we should table this discussion and have both of them side by side, our ethics and this one, to see where are they similar, then we may make one document rather than having both of them on here. So that's just my suggestion.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, what's the logo on the top of the code of ethics for school board members?
That's from Idaho.
From Idaho.
It, remember, this is just a sample of a code of-
Yeah, I, it's ISBA, so it's their logo, and it's a sample of the code of ethics.
And it's unique to the local board. Says, as a member of my local Board of Trustees, I will strive to improve student achievement in public education, and I will. So it's more tailored to that unique district.
Right, so that's why they were saying that we could use this as a, for us to work off of.
A template or a guide.
Yes, a guide, okay.
So Ms. Gittens had suggested that we table the discussion. It, it might work out well, because we, we have an upcoming discussion about whether you would like to begin an ethics committee, and the board attorney will be leading that discussion at a future date. So this might be a good combination at that time to talk about the, the ethics agreement of the board itself, and then whether or not you desire to have an ethics advisory committee.
Okay. And then in the meantime, you all could look at this and see if there's anything that you think that is good, bad, indifferent, or how we could tweak it.
Thank you. All right, and does anyone have any other items from the protocol manual that they would like to see addressed before we move on? Then I will make the changes that we discussed today and send out the updated version. I guess, Ms. Gittens?
I, I know I came in late and I apologize for that, but on the section about having, where was it, about the 10 minutes or something?
Page nine.
Yes, what was the, what was the conclusion on that?
There was no change to that language.
To, to say that we only have 10 minutes or?
Yes, that was the discussion at the, at the first real meeting, and that was the agreement that the team had come to at that time, and that was accepted today.
And that is 10 minutes for specifically?
Per person.
For?
And for good of the order, sorry, for board member comments at the end of the meeting.
In the action meeting as well?
For, yes, for me, and it says strive to.
Well, I mean, and I, I go back to the fact that the statute does not limit the amount of time, so I don't know how we can limit something that the statute doesn't.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I just want to say that there have been times when I've been asked to speak to groups, and 10 minutes really is a long time. You can say a lot in 10 minutes. And, and that with seven of us, that's an hour and 10 minutes right off the bat if we each take our 10 minutes, which many of us do not. So I don't know if we can relinquish our time left, but I, you know, in the interest of the consideration and respect for staff and audience that are here and don't, won't want to leave during our comments, I think that 10 minutes is a, a really adequate gift for us to be able to share our messages.
Yeah, and actually, if I may, I'm, I'm not questioning that we can't do it in 10 minutes, and I totally agree with you. The thing is, having it on paper and in a document makes it more strenuous. And if someone were to go 12 minutes, then someone's going to raise their hand and said, say, we have a protocol that says you can only go 10 minutes.
Right. And that's why the word strive is there.
Yeah, and, and I think that we would have to agree, you know, just being respectful of our colleagues and recognizing that not everyone takes the 10 minutes. I, I think that, you know, we're not going to be, I, we could say approximately, I don't know. You know, it's kind of, again, making another mountain out of a molehill, I think, but-
Well, and that's my whole thing about even saying it, that we are adults and we should be, and we are professionals. And if we say to each other, can we just strive or try to keep it at 10 minutes? And it's not as official as it's on here and it can't be brought back up as it's in the protocol.
Ms. Patrica, you're online now?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here and I will be joining you quickly and go to the hall.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pre-Bruno?
So pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order, there's nothing in the statute that puts a time limit. The statute really doesn't even address good of the order of board member comments. This is through Robert's Rules of Order. And generally speaking, Robert's Rules does tend to indicate 10 minutes for speaking time. So again, this is to the board's discretion, but generally, that is what Robert's Rules would tend to- would tend to offer is 10 minutes.
Thank you. Any further discussion regarding this?
The only other, Ms. Javonelli, the only other thing Ms. Gittens didn't miss part of the conversation earlier, where I think when the board took the consensus of the 10 minutes, it was also clear that if a board member went to 11 or 12 minutes, they're not just going to be, you know, there's no, what did you use, Cindy, that word?
No one's going to take the cane and pull you off.
Yes. So that was part of the discussion as well, that there would be some latitude.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the next part of our discussion is around the items for the board member articles. And let me pull up those assignments. And thank you, Ms. Thomas, for putting together the newsletter rotation. So you can see the dates here and the person who is assigned. Do you have any questions about those? And the due dates are there as well. Ms. Morgan?
Just confirming that it's due to staff on that date. That's not the publication date.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And Ms. Javonelli has the 12 months, right? I'm just kidding.
And then the board did receive a memo from Dr. Savage around the process for that. Are there any questions about that?
Ms. Gittens?
I don't, it's not in here. His, that's not an attachment that shows what that was. Can I request that for the purposes of having everything together that we add to the documentation under B2, the information about the process for, from the superintendent, so that it's all in one place if someone cares to see it?
Sure, we can add that.
And I don't have it up right now and I guess the, I always thought that when you submit your article that it's also submitted to the news press. This is what has happened in the past.
And the Breeze and the neighborhood papers.
And I'm just wondering what is happening with that?
Yes, as far as I know, it is also submitted to the news press. They do have a maximum, I believe, of 600 words.
Right, and that's in our, that's in the protocols for what the article should be. That's been in there forever, that it was 600 words because it was going to the news press.
Correct.
My question was the timing of putting it in the news press. An example, I did my article in like December the 3rd or so and it didn't get in the news press until the 26th at the end of the month. So I was thinking that we had a reciprocal agreement with news press, that when we send it in, it would go in. Or are we saying that they hold it until they're ready to put it in?
That I will have to check line. I'm not aware of how that works. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I talked to someone at the Breeze and sometimes they hold it for its content, you know, maybe later in the month. But they, I know that they all have gone to the news press, the Breeze and the local, those little local community papers that are included with the Breeze publications.
Thank you. Ms. Stillwell said she can help with that.
I was just going to say, had some additional comments. Thank you.
Sorry, this is awkward. Yes, so when we get yours, Communications sends it out, but we don't have any, we can't control when they're going to publish. So we send it to them and then they basically decide, because typically they'll get them and they may have some lined up. So they may have, you know, three or four that they already know that they need to publish and so they'll push us down or it's whatever order they decide to go in. So we send them to them and then from there, the control is taken out of our hands.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions regarding? Ms. Javonelli, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, and I just wanted to bring it to the attention, like, the way it falls, there are seven of us and, you know, there's 12 months and I think two months have already taken for like the superintendent and what else? Ms. Thomas? Board chair, thank you. So, I mean, sometimes there's somebody that's going to have it maybe twice in a year and it's just going to be the rotation and that's just the way it's going to fall. And I just want to make sure the board's kind of aware of that. I'm okay with that. I think that's the fair way to do it. I think they were a little concerned. They were not, you know, they weren't doing it right. So I just want to make sure that they get the right direction and that they don't feel like they're having, they're making a selection that's, you know, not into their, in their job description list per se. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that and is okay with that because I certainly am. But I just want, I don't want them to feel like they're going to get in trouble for somebody getting an extra month. But that's just the way the rotation falls. Okay, I mean, they were a little concerned about that. So I just wanted to make sure that they're okay. And then, well, yes and no. So, yeah. But the other thing that I was going to bring up is the fact that it goes to the Breeze and the news press. But I think that needs to be defined and clear because that's not always been the case as well, that that's just where it goes. So I think if it goes to any other media, that shouldn't be the responsibility of the district. And that, where is that clear in the protocols? Because I don't believe it is. And I know that it wants to go, the superintendent, does it go to the superintendent once we give it to Communications, once we're done with it? Or does it go, and then go to the superintendent? Or do we give it to the superintendent then to Communications? I don't remember. And I was trying to find that.
Yeah, Ms. Stillwell, can you?
So.
I don't think it goes to the superintendent.
No.
Well, I thought he has to review it or something.
Are you talking about the current process or the way that we do it currently?
No, the new process.
So in that, so I just want to clarify because I have, and I have Irma in the back too. It goes to the news press, it goes to the Cape Coral Breeze and it goes to NBC2. So those are the three outlets that it's always sent to. And then she's going to tell me if it goes to any others. But in the new process that Dr. Savage shared, basically, hold on, I'm trying to find the, basically, in the new process, the board member would write the article and then submit it directly to the media based on a contact list that Communications provides. So it'd be up to the board member to submit rather than the district.
To, you know, the Breeze or the news press?
In the new process, yes. Communications would provide a list of the email addresses to go to and then the board member would submit on her behalf to those outlets.
Oh, I don't really agree with that.
No.
So, because I don't think it's official coming from, that makes it coming from an individual instead of the board. And when it comes to the district, it comes from, for me, in my opinion, it would be coming from, as an approval from the district. And so I don't, that's just my opinion. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but.
Fisher? And then Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, and I agree. It should come from the board office, I think, to those. And what was the third thing you mentioned after the news press and the Breeze?
NBC?
NBC2.
NBC2 has an editorial page.
Okay, and everyone is aware that the Breeze publishes all those local neighborhood and community papers and usually they go to all of those also. Sanibel, Lehigh, the whole district. Yeah, okay.
And then Ms. Gittens and Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about the NBC2. It's a.
Yeah, me neither.
Can you explain? I mean, I've never seen it on.
On their website.
Is it on their digital page or?
It's on, I believe it's on their website, I think is where they post them.
I was never even aware of that.
Yeah.
Ms. Vaughn, please.
Why is it sent to just one of our local news channels?
Apparently, it's, hold on, I'm going to get, see if Irma can come out here.
She's behind you. She's behind you.
Hi. You snuck up.
And like.
I'm like, as opposed to doing this from text message. So anybody that we send it to, it's up for them, it's up to them to post. So we don't have any agreements that require them to post anything. We send it and then hopefully they'll take the comments and they'll put them out there. So at this point, it goes to the news press, it goes to the Cape Coral Daily Breeze, it goes to NBC2, it goes to Wink.
Correct, and there are other local.
Now we've added Wink.
And depending on the topic, there are other local, smaller publications that we'll send to if they have opinion pieces. But again, it's up to them whether they post it and it's up to them, if they do post it, what date they choose to post it.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Well, then why isn't it just sent out as a, like a, similar to a press release, here it is?
Yeah.
And everyone that wants to or doesn't want to, whenever they want to or not, they can post it. I don't understand the choosing certain ones.
A press release is different. A press release is we're sharing information and opinion piece is something that they select to do where if it's a news release, they are still making the decision to publish it, but it is more newsworthy than what someone thinks or wants to talk about.
Well, I mean, and I'm not, you know, talking about the differentiation between the two types, but why isn't the information just sent?
Also, our news release is sent to a larger distribution list. It isn't just the media. It's also sent to local dignitaries. It's sent to like the sheriff's office so that they also know what news is happening and they do the same for us. So other organizations like Fort Myers PD, KPD, they'll send their press releases and include us so we're all aware of what's happening. So it's a different list for a different purpose.
So I go back to one of my colleagues saying, why don't we just have a list of local news whatever as a group and have the administrative secretaries just send it out once a month?
Yeah, that would be the board's decision.
I mean, that would, that would take something off of you guys and we have the list, we approve, you know, it just goes to all the local folks and boom, it's done.
Any other, Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, so on the table, we have two different ways to distribute whether, am I correct in what Ms. Gittens said? You're saying to our executive secretaries? Is that what you're saying?
Well, please?
I just, yeah, go ahead.
Let me just.
I'm not clear exactly what you're saying.
So in other words, I write an article. I give it to Latonya. Latonya, and I, actually, when I do it, I do it to Latonya and copy Irma. So at that point, then Latonya would have the list, boom, send it to the list of the news people that we've approved and Irma and her team puts it up on the website and it's done.
But as it stood before, it went to Communications and Communications sent it out to all the media outlets. But with the new processing, that's what they were saying. We sent it to them, they put ours on the website. Then if we want it sent anywhere else, that we personally. I know, but that's what, that's what the new process is. If we, and that's why Ms. Javonelli said, no.
No.
But that's, am I correct?
Yeah, so basically, I'll just walk you. So news articles, the way that we structured the new process is that they should be tied to major projects of the district and aligned with the strategic plan, that they shouldn't be any more than 600 words in length and then they should also be submitted with a disclaimer, which was in the memo that Dr. Savage sent. If you need any data to support what it is you're writing about, then you request that through your typical board member process and we return that data information to you so that you can, you know, write the article. And then, once you write the article, if you want grammar checks or anything along those lines, you just say, "I'd like an extra set of eyes to just look it over." Then you can send it to Irma and me and we can certainly do that for you and then send it back if you just want that set of eyes. If you don't, there's no commitment or any, you don't have to. And then we would ask that you would send a copy to me and to Denise as the chief of staff so that we can be able to put it up on the website and the superintendent knows what the content is. And then we'll make the change that the board office can then send it to all of the emails that we'll provide for a distribution list of the media.
Okay, so.
Right, Ms. Vaughn.
So now I'm going to ask the original question. Why do we, where is that exactly what you read with all the bullet points?
So that was in a memo that was sent on December 10th, I believe, to you all. I think Dr. Carlin sent it, I think.
With that same verbiage, I remember.
Yep, so we can take what's in here, although we'll need to change it based on, which I think is a great suggestion from Mrs. Javonelli, that the board secretaries can send it then to the media. So we can make that change and then take that information and do what Ms. Gittens suggested and go ahead and put it in the protocols so everything is together.
And this is why I'm asking and trying to clarify because typically, when we do this in a workshop, we're going to have the verbiage in front of us with the bullet points or whatever, not pulling it out of a memo from almost a month ago. And in that way, Ms. McClung can, you know, as we go through it point by point, we can do what we've done with the other pieces and say, "Good, bullet one, yep, bullet two, no, on bullet, you understand where I'm going with this." And then the suggestions for changes, such as have been brought up here on the dais, can be added in the red print so that we can ruminate on it and come back to it. Something that I would like in there, especially if it stays with Communications, is I would like a timeframe for release because this is in part what caused an issue not very long ago about an immediate release, about a release that didn't include, and albeit, we didn't have a pot, and this is what I was referring to earlier in this meeting, when some of us, including myself, protested on the content. Well, it came back, you don't have a protocol on it, which this new memo gives a protocol on content as well. But I don't feel comfortable making a decision here and now without this language from the memo pulled out, giving us an opportunity for the suggestions that were brought up to be added, to be put it, you know, put it in red print. I just, I'm not, I'm not ready to make any kind of a decision until I see it in that kind of format.
Thank you. And Ms. Vaughn, it was a draft on the 10th, a draft. Just so that you know that. And Ms. Vaughn, it was a draft on the 10th, a draft, just so that you know that too.
All right, I'm sorry.
So what you're saying is, makes sense.
Madam Chair, if I may, and board members, my suggestion is that we do include this, and I saw Cindy, I think she's taking rapid notes over there, that we go ahead and put this into the protocol in the appropriate place, as Ms. Vaughn suggested, and make sure that we include any of the feedback you've provided today. I think it is very appropriate for you to have a copy of it in front of you-
Right.
-as we're going through to review it, so I do agree with that. Our apologies, we will bring that back for you, for your consideration.
Okay, and if I may add, it's also, you know, the public is here to follow along what we're doing, and the public wouldn't have been privy to that, to that draft. And so it's difficult enough for me to follow along, and it would be impossible for people who are watching to follow along at all, because it's not in board docs.
Thank you, I'll get a copy of that and add it in here, and we'll bring that back.
Thank you.
And my request, Ms. McClung, would be that we actually put it in the text of the board protocols-
Absolutely.
-so that they see exactly where it's going to go with all of the appropriate language in red.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, because as I said, it is not protocol at this time, it was just a draft that was sent to us, so it really is not even final. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Right, yeah, and again, it's just, how can we make a decision when we're still adding and tweaking?
Thank you, we'll do that, and I'll send it out to you, so you'll have a chance to look at it before we meet again. Thank you. Okay, the next item that we have to discuss is around the board meeting dates. I'm looking at the wrong agenda, excuse me. There we go. Around the workshop day and time and the briefing day and time, and also, there was some discussion around whether the board would like to go to one meeting per month rather than two. I believe you were, that a Google Drive was shared with you, I can pull that Google Drive up. Dr. Carlin and someone else in the office had worked on, pardon?
Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, had worked on getting some information from other counties on whether they met once or twice per month. So if you take a look up here, or you can pull it up on your Google Drive if you prefer, you can see that Miami Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, Collier, St. John's, Charlotte, Flagler, and Washington Counties all meet one time per month rather than two. So let's start with that discussion, and then we'll move into the briefings and the workshop dates and times.
Okay, Ms. Gittens.
My personal opinion is, we are in the midst of so many things that require major attention, that if we were going to switch to one meeting a month, I don't think it would be at a time that we're in the midst of a pandemic, trying to hire a superintendent, election issues. To me, it's, in times when things are more even keel and level, we could discuss that, and then add to it the fact that we don't even have enough time now to get through our workshops that we have asked about, and they're behind, so not that down the road perhaps, another day and time, but I just think we have too much on our plate at this point to try to cut back on what we're doing. We've got to get stuff organized and in place and all of that, so that's my opinion.
Ms. Giavonelli?
So with all due respect, Ms. Gittens, I don't think you understand, this is just regarding an action meeting. The other meetings would still, we would still have workshops and briefings, because that's not going to stop, but the actual action meeting would just be once a month, and we could put most of our energy and effort into the briefings and the workshops, and the action would just happen once a month, and we would have the information prior to that would help us. I think it would be very efficient, and it would be. The public still has the opportunity to speak. We're not trying, we're, no, we're going to allow for the public to speak, that is going to be changed, and there's new law about that, I think that's going to happen, and it's not trying to circumvent any public comment whatsoever. And in fact, I hope that we can engage the public better by being more efficient with our board meetings. Our briefings, the public still has opportunity to speak, and there'll be plenty of time for that, and allow us to have those and be more effective and efficient. Thank you.
And I, some of the counties that are listed on here, they do not even have briefings or workshops, they just have their one meeting, but their superintendent has been there for so many years, their superintendent does, just from me having conversations with some of them, their superintendent does everything, they have their one-on-ones where they get all their information, and then they have their meeting, which I don't know how they do all that, but that's what I have been told from a few of them. Are there any other, and thank you for sharing what you said, Ms. Patrica?
Liz Morgan's here.
Oh. Ms. Morgan?
Well, I have to agree with both speakers. First of all, we haven't got a way of work that tolerates cutting back on the number of meetings that we have, but I do think having a regular agenda meeting once a month makes a lot of sense. Now, what I don't know is the impact on staff of going to that schedule, so I'd like to hear from staff, because I know that they have to go through a lengthy process preparing for that docket, and then they would have to go 30 days before they'd have another opportunity to come forward unless there was a special meeting, so I would like to hear from staff.
If I may, and we can certainly have Ms. Schaefer weigh in as well, but from a staff perspective, from an executive leadership perspective, we do see that there are other districts that have done this. It does require a little more organization, being prepared well ahead of time, anticipating. I will tell you, just during my time here at the district office, I can tell you that there are things we regularly bring forward on a schedule that typically come at certain times of the year. We have a schedule for budget, when we review those types of things, strategic planning, all of those types of things that happen. Certainly, there are variable items that will come forward, but we do typically run on a schedule, and, you know, we would operate at the board's pleasure, so that's our job as staff to react to that. We do see other districts that have done it successfully, and we would be amenable to that if this is the board's desire.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I love the idea of a once-a-month action meeting, while understanding that cutting back on briefings and workshops at this point is not probably the best idea. We could enter into this with an eye toward trying to be more efficient with those meetings as well going forward, but the once-a-month, when I look at this list, some of the highest performing districts in the state of Florida are on this list, and they're getting the work done with once-a-month action meetings. I don't know why we wouldn't try to emulate a St. John's, a Collier, a Miami Dade. I mean, Miami Dade has far more items on their agenda, on their agendas than we do, because they're two, three times, more than three times the size that we are. I really, really love the idea, Ms. Giavonelli, two meetings in a row, we agree. I really love the idea of once-a-month action meetings. So those are my comments for now, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I agree also that one action meeting a month should be adequate, and I think it will drive us towards a better efficiency, and we have an opportunity for discussion and information gathering at briefings and workshops.
Ms. Giavonelli?
I just want to add, I know the community might be concerned over it, but I think this would free up that town hall meeting that Ms. Gittens wanted to have, that where we could be here for community. I think, because when the community comes and speaks, it's usually not on the agenda. It really, truly isn't. So I mean, I just think it would give that one-on-one ability more time and devoted strictly to the public versus, because action meeting is just to get the business done. That's totally different from the workshops and the briefings, and so I support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giavonelli. Ms. Gittens?
Through the chair, may I ask the attorney, have you reviewed the upcoming legislation that talks about the public comment at meetings and all of that that's pending, because I think that's going to have a lot to do with this as well?
So there is legislation that is pending with regards to public comment, and yes, Ms. Gittens, if that piece of legislation passes, it will definitely have an impact on this. The proposal is that there is 30 minutes prior to every meeting for general public comment, three minutes per person, and then there is an additional public comment, three minutes per person, with regards to each agenda item. In a nutshell, that's what the bill is proposed.
And it's in, it's a set of bill, 133, I believe?
I'll have to pull it up. There's some other things in it, but that's the gist of it.
Right. And I have talked to some of the counties, which they said, we already do that, and, but we don't have, everybody's not coming and speaking on every single item, because we were thinking about, how long would that take when you're reading that? You know, we'll be here two days for one meeting, possibly. But they said that they've been doing that for quite some time, and it never really has affected them, but that's in a county situation. Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Gittens?
Tiny bit off topic, but I've noticed a significant increase in the analysis of pending legislation from the board attorney, and it came up, so I wanted to offer just my appreciation for, I feel far more plugged in from the board attorney's perspective and the impact it will have specifically on Lee County because of the frequent updates, legislative updates you've been providing us, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Well, I, I just think that, oh, I know what it was, you mentioned other districts, and there, we've heard from a couple of my colleagues about what other districts are doing, and how they are, you know, the high-performing, and I've watched many of them, and they do many things different from us, and even in public comment, they allow the public to clap, or they allow the public to speak on whatever topic, and maybe that's, we need to workshop all of this or whatever, and decide once the protocols from the state come down and make the decision then, and based on our meeting times and how often we're meeting, I would be very careful of putting out in the public, we're going to cut down the number of meetings we have, without being very careful and specific about what that means, that it is not taking away time that the public gets to speak. So I just think we need to have the message very clear and straight, or it's going to cause more issues.
And I believe it was not, it's the action meeting is what we're speaking about, that one meeting and not the briefings or workshops. Ms. Giavonelli?
So, and I thought about this, there's so much we can do with this, and it's up to the board, but I think we need to hear from the people as well. But I mean, we could even have a briefing on an evening, instead of, you know, and there's opportunity to do these things instead of always it being an action meeting, as long as we get the work done. I think that's why I think it's important just to kind of separate it out a little bit, and if we don't like it, we could always go back to what we're doing now, but I mean, if we don't try to, I mean, change is good, and trying something different is not going to hurt us, it's truly not. And if it doesn't work, and the community doesn't like it, we go back to what we were doing, but I got a funny feeling that won't be the case, my opinion, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giavonelli. I'm going to go to Ms. Fisher, and then I'll come back to Ms. Gittens.
So then, with a business meeting once a month, which we are obligated by statute to do, we can be efficient and stay to the agenda and do the business of the board. That will give us an opportunity to enhance some of our other gatherings and to allow for back-and-forth interaction with the community, which would happen anyway if we had that, if that bill was passed, and we had that 30 minutes for anything.
So our current board, there's just a couple of things that are different in this bill than what is in our current board policy, so we have some of this already in our current board policy. You're allowed to come and speak about the agenda. We do have the three minutes, you're allowed to speak about anything that you want to speak, so there is just a couple of things that are different, but we will incorporate whatever those changes are if the legislature does adopt the bill, so it won't change it that much, people will still be able to come and talk, and if it's an all-day meeting, then I believe some of the other counties have the public comment spread out during the meeting as well, so we can play and figure out how to do that.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, did you have another comment, Ms. Fisher?
Well, I was just going to-
Sure, Ms. Fisher.
So, public comment, I mean, we have a lot of avenues for public comment. We have our website, we have the different questionnaires, and people can always email us, so we get a lot of input from the public that may not occur at an official meeting, and we, you know, I know that we all consider all of that also. So I'm kind of looking forward to trying that and increasing the efficiency, and then opening up the opportunity for the public to communicate to us in a variety of ways.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Gittens, please.
Wasn't it brought up at one point, and maybe I'm just dreaming, about having a briefing meeting for the public, and where I'm going with this is, the board did not want to do the town halls throughout the county, so maybe we could look at it differently as a public briefing once a month, to kind of take care of them speaking about anything they want to speak about. I still go back to, I think that having, if we went to once a month, but we also did a once-a-month town hall that I had suggested, and maybe you'll rethink that, that would give us time to do that, and we would be hearing more from the public, and not just here. My concern is adding another public meeting here is not expanding hearing from the public, it's expanding hearing from the people that are able and have the time and the ability to come here. We are not fulfilling our strategic plan piece of including the community by just continuing to do the same thing in the same venue, so anyway.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, just finally, it's been my experience that attending school events over the years, I have gathered a plethora of information and ideas from parents who were more comfortable in that environment to come up and talk, and they were there because their kids were either performing or getting an award or something. So I think that that's another stone that we don't want to leave unturned, but continue to take that opportunity to attend those events when we're invited, and even when we're not.
Ms. Patrica?
And I would agree with that entirely. You know, as a parent with children in the schools, when I go to their activities, I can't really be a parent, because they, because people are approaching me, and we really are, when we attend those events, we are really out in the community where they are. So I agree with you, it provides for easier access to us. And then, in terms of the town hall, I had a very, very well-attended town hall down in Astero, I can't even remember when it was, but all I did was I contacted the Astero Community Center, I paid the $20, I contacted the superintendent, and I said, hey, I'm having this town hall, and he was able to work with the chief to get some sheriff's deputies there, and, you know, I held a town hall where 50 or so people provided their feedback to me directly, and I went to them. You know, they didn't have to come down here to provide that feedback, I went to them. So the town hall thing, I think, is something each of us can accomplish on our own. I'm not, I hate the thought of having staff have to coordinate that and do it for us, so the town hall is one piece, and the other piece is, you're right, being in the schools at those regularly scheduled events, the parents are already there, and they will, they're not shy about approaching you.
No.
Whereas, at a public meeting where they have to go to a microphone, and they have to, they have to speak in front of a group and potentially be recorded, that is very intimidating for a lot of parents. So those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
In terms of the action meeting, I'm amenable to either once a month or keeping it the way it is, but I think something that we need to address in this discussion is the time that these various meetings are held. One thing that would be helpful to me in setting my schedule when I'm looking at either private or school board-related events, is kind of a regularity of our basic meetings. Obviously, there are things that come up that we have to schedule, you know, for instance, our superintendent search is doing that, but, you know, one question, because I haven't looked, I mean, I haven't researched on these districts, but what time, can anybody answer the question through the chair on, you know, does Collier do their, at night? Does Miami Dade do it? Do all of these large districts have their action meetings at night? So who can-
Good question.
Because, you know, we could substitute doing one briefing, you know, have it regular, have it the first Monday or Tuesday or whatever, a briefing in the morning, and then the second one of the month, if we're not doing an action meeting, do, I mean, this, these are just ideas, do one at night, so we have, for people that can come in the morning, people that can come in the evening, and, but have it on a fairly regular schedule. But what time do these districts, who can answer that?
I do not have that information. I am aware of a couple of these that are in the evening, but I would be remiss to comment on all of them, but we can certainly provide that information to the board, but I don't have-
I'm just curious on it, Ms. Dupree Bruno have an answer?
I will tell you that some of the districts start in the morning, like 9:00, 10:00 in the morning, and they go until they're done.
Okay, I'm sorry, they go into what?
Until they're finished with the business.
It's like an all-day.
All day.
If we're doing one a month, that might be something that we want to do. I just need to comment about the briefing, since I was the vice chair for a year, and my biggest frustration was that that meeting was the only one that had an action meeting following every time, and there were things that needed to be done and said, and I know that some people were irritated with me and cutting off things, but, you know, you have to have an hour for staff to set up different things, and so, to me, the timing of the briefing meeting was always, almost always a problem, that there were too many things, and it was the time that we should have to discuss and to give our own opinions on things, and it just didn't happen. So, you know, maybe some of the briefing meetings could be scheduled differently, so you didn't have to say, hey, it's quarter after five, and the little man coming in needs to set up, and the staff- coming in needs to set up," and the staff. I mean, we, we need to, to me, I would look at varying the times, like, not so much the day, but the time of the day, possibly. And kind of looking at what is successful to others, large school boards, in terms of the timing and of, you know, do they start at 9:00? Do they start at 1:00? Do they, what has been their, their experiences with that? I mean, you know, and I appreciate when the public says, "Well, you know, when you do it in the morning, then so many people can't come." And, yeah, that's true. But other people who've been working all day, you do it at 6:00, and they have little kids, well, maybe they can't come. They don't have a babysitter for their, I mean, there's always something. So if there's a way to vary it, but keep it regular on how we vary it, it might open up opportunities for more people. Okay, so that's my opinion on this.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I'm just going to suggest that we table this for a while, because clearly, you know, we need more information, and, you know, but we've all had an opportunity to hear what everyone is thinking about this. Take some time, get a little bit more clarity on some of the questions. And so let's just, I'd like to see us move on to the superintendent component.
Okay. And then, well, Ms. McClung?
Thank you. Yes, actually.
Is there a time, is this time-sensitive that we have to have?
No. In fact, I was going to suggest that, based on this discussion, that staff have some time to come up with maybe a couple of options and come back with a proposal and have a full workshop around that. And at that time, we could also discuss the date and days of the briefing and workshops, since this would have an impact on that.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, I think we're having difficulty conceptualizing this in a vacuum without the workshops and the briefings. But I would, we do have to mention that Wednesdays are typically a very bad day from a religious education perspective. So I'd like us to eliminate Wednesday as a possibility, if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McClung.
So that was the last item that we had. I did just want to give you a brief update related to the acknowledgements piece. The Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Communications and I have been working on a plan, and we will be bringing that to you with the superintendent, I believe it's week after next, during your one-on-ones, to get some more input. And then we'll bring that proposal forward after that. So thank you for your time today. I will send out the information that we've changed today, and also we'll get that process for the messages out to you. And with that, I would turn it over to the Chair for your superintendent search. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I suggest that we have maybe a five-minute break, so once everybody can take that break, then we can come back and we'll be full-fledged into this next conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are back and we are going to be continuing on with their next item on the agenda, which is the superintendent search. We had conversations the last week and we are just coming back to touch on the topic to make sure that we have not missed anything. We do understand that January 2nd, we have interview questions that need to be turned in, I'm sorry, not January, January 12th, by 8:00 AM, we need to make sure that the questions are returned back to Molly at Ray &amp; Associates. The questions were handed to us and those are just a guideline. Those questions can be used. If there's questions there that you deem appropriate, if there's questions that you think that we should tweak to better set that pertains to Lee County, we have that option to do so. And I will tell you, based on Ms. Giavanelle's recommendation with HR, I did touch base with them. So I do have some good information from them as well. I know that I just, pretty much I just put this, and this is just a guideline of proposed times with, but I'm gonna, actually Ms. Gittens had said that she had something to share with us on this, so Ms. Gittens.
Can we do that now?
Yep.
Okay, if everyone looks at their email, I just sent you an email. I spoke to, starting out first, several community people. There was a concern that the input from the community would not be coming until after we basically had had interviews and pretty much made our minds up. And I had mentioned before about the fact--
Did I get that, Ms. Gittens?
You, it should be there.
I got it, just refresh.
Yeah. And so, bottom line is, I also talked to people across the, the state in different areas, different districts, as to how they had done to keep community input. And as I had mentioned before, I was one of the people on a superintendent selection committee here in Lee County. And I feel that to gain back a little bit of the trust and respect from the community, that the proposal I am doing would allow that one last chance for more community input. It is very simple that basically we're talking about one meeting. And I'll go through it very quickly, just for the record. This committee is essential to the board, community, and candidates. This will help us with our decision-making, including community, showing the candidates how the district and community are oriented and inclusive. So basically what it would be that each of us would choose three people, one from a school-based employee, depending on whatever level, and hopefully not all just principals or whatever. When I was on it, I was a teacher and Dr. Cuckel had appointed me to that committee. One parent, one community leader, and there has been discussion, the departments feel they've been kind of left out as well. So each department would select one representative to sit on this committee. They would, through a Zoom or something, go through and probably the attorney could, just letting them know that this is the sunshine, anything you write, anything you put down is going to be collected and is for public record. I remember that quite well because we were working with the news press. And when we had meetings, every note, everything that we had ended up in the news press a couple of days later. So if you write on the side of your paper, you know, Lee County School sucks, it was going to be in the paper. So just briefly letting them know that sunshine deal. And then the first thing they would do is just receive, and this is where the board would have to decide, would you want them to receive all 10 or just the five? But they would receive and review the CVs from the finalists. They would watch the workshop from January 6th, where each one was presented and the details were stated by Ray &amp; Associates. They could do whatever they want to, to follow up. If you scroll down to the very bottom, the matrix is simple, it's not numerical. I'd spoke to someone in FSBA that does this and one of the comments was they try very hard not to do anything like a top number one or two or three, and that they basically use select the top five or your bottom five or whatever that number is, and just give a strength or a question or an issue. And if you go back up, so they would look at the resumes, fill out that one matrix, that would be turned in. The only meeting they would have, hopefully in person, if not by Zoom, and in that meeting they would have a gallery walk type thing where there is a station or a room, let's say, on Zoom for each one of the candidates. When they come into the room, they would be put in groups and in that gallery walk, they would go to each station and discuss, then come back to the table with their first matrix and individually look and see if they want to make any changes. And the matrix, how do you pronounce ma-tri, matrix? Matrix would be then collected. And the only other thing they would do is during the interviews, they would be asked to watch the live interviews and complete another matrix and turn that in. So very simply, they review the information, do their quick matrix on it, attend one meeting, whether virtually or live, and in groups talk about each candidate, and watch the interviews and fill out the last matrix and that's it. So they would really only have to be as a group together one time.
No, thank you. And I, as I was saying, I had, upon the recommendation of Ms. Giavanelle's and others, I had the opportunity to spend some time with HR yesterday. Suzette and Mr. Dodick were gracious enough to sit with me and go over kind of what Ms. Gittens has put in here as, of course, she has stated she was part of this whole thing. And by no means are we trying to eliminate the public, the staff, the team. We want everybody's input on this and it is our goal to make sure that that happens. We have had that prior to this, you know, getting feedback from them and what they wanted. So, but in talking to HR and speaking to others, I am going to recommend that, and I know we reached out to Ray, I reached out to Ray &amp; Associates as well, is bringing the five finalists in person here. Do you have the budget for that?
Point of order, Madam Chair, can we, someone had their hand up and can we discuss?
I'm sorry?
No, okay. Well, I mean, I just thought if there were any questions about this before you move on.
I did not, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
For Ms. Gittens?
For Ms., I'm sorry, Attorney DePree Bruno, based on what Ms. Gittens is proposing.
Okay. You want to ask Ms. DePree Bruno?
May I? Attorney DePree Bruno, if I recall correctly from our ethics training that we all had to complete before the end of the year, meetings of advisory committees of the school board are not permitted to break up into different groups because no member of the public would be able to, under sunshine, be privy to what's being said in each of those meetings. Is that true or not true? Do I recall that incorrectly?
So that's one of the concerns that I always have is when, for example, you're having a Zoom meeting and there are those breakout sessions, the public who's watching that full Zoom meeting cannot watch those breakout sessions. So that's, that's one thing that, you know, I would think it through a little bit to fix that part of it because that is one of the concerns that I would have.
Okay.
And, and may I answer?
Yes.
Okay. And it's okay, I mean, I just thought that was another opportunity to get, you know, a different perspective. But we don't need to have number three if, if you feel that it's something breaking sunshine or whatever, we don't need that. When the group, that can just be the one meeting where they discuss as a group. And that's that.
Okay. Ms. Morgan?
So I see this as one opportunity for the public to engage in the process. What I'd like to hear is what is the entire process that we are going to use to engage the public and then look at this in that context?
Okay, thank you. So--
Go ahead, Ms. Vaughn. And as a specific on this, and I know you were just about to talk about talking to Ray &amp; Associates, who would facilitate this?
Okay. So--
This particular, yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I may finish, thank you.
Can you say that question? Sorry.
Say the question?
No, her, her question.
Answer the question?
No, you're going, I think, once you finish--
Yeah, it will answer the question. It will answer the question.
I wonder if you would get to it.
It will answer the question, that's correct. So based on my, okay, so I've contacted with Ray &amp; Associates, they definitely want to have, they want to keep this timeline that we have committed because they are concerned there is multiple districts around here that are looking and they want to make sure that we have the first pick. And so I just want to make sure that I put that out there. But because of the fact that this is such an important thing for us to do, I believe that we need to bring them in person, the five candidates, which we, there is a budget for that, so that can happen. And that way it allows the, and actually, speaking to HR, they have the process, they have done this, they have, I mean, the actual, like, all you need to do is change the names, put it in there. And that would include, a lot what Ms. Gittens has said right here, is putting the members of the public together, the members of the district, the members of the community, it includes, it encompasses everybody, so no one is left out of it. And they, actually, HR would facilitate this--
Right.
--and would help us do all of this. They have done this before, they are prepared to, to assist us in any means that we have. And if I'm stepping out of line, because I have, both of them are here today, and they will help arrange the flights, you know, get the candidates here and everything. We have, they have, I mean, it's, they have everything. Ms. Fisher, did you, now, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the timeline from--
Mike, go.
I apologize. I'm looking at the timeline from Ray &amp; Associates.
Mm-hmm.
And so it does say, "Top candidates are presented to the board and consultant assists the board in selecting the finalists." We did that. Then it says, "Consultant will meet with constituents and staff interview groups to discuss their roles," okay, "to be determined."
What timeline, do you have an updated timeline or is that the--
It was same one, if you just looked at--
It was suggested. But my question is, we hired Ray &amp; Associates for how much?
$26,000.
Right?
We hired them and, no, they'll be, they'll be working on this with us.
I'm sorry?
What was, what was the question?
Well, we hired them to do this entire process, did we not? Because we didn't want local internal people working on this search. I mean, if that's my recollection of the proposal from the beginning. So now we're going to have HR facilitate. So does that mean Ray &amp; Associates is finished with their work?
No, 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 no. They will work with Ray &amp; Associates, okay.
Okay.
They will work with.
Okay. And are you suggesting that we are bringing the finalists in for the, an in-person interview? Is that the final interview or is that the initial?
I am suggesting, based on conversation and the fact that we do have, and a person can be on Zoom and what they're, what they are in Zoom versus what they are in person can be two totally different things.
Absolutely, yes.
To me, this is a very, very important role. We have to make sure that we get it right. And I believe that if we have the opportunity and we can bring them here to do this and the process that was used before for Mr. Burke, I was not present at that time, but it allows, and what Ms. Gittens has brought to us as well, does allow the community, it allows us, it allows everybody to be with these individuals, see who they really are in person, and then move from there. Because then we, they're judging us as much as we're judging them. So I just, not judging, but interviewing us as well.
Right. So then, in continuation, so we're going to bring them here and then we will interview them and narrow down the choice or keep five finalists. I mean, I don't know exactly what the intention is. And then we will have them meet the community. Now, you know, Ms. Morgan and I have been through this before twice. And, and Ms. Gittens?
Yep.
So, yeah, the community meeting, you know, was very, very telling and, and very informative. So I agree with that. Are they going to come and then stay for several days?
Yes, ma'am.
They have both meetings during that one trip or we're going to bring them here twice? I'm just trying to get some clarity.
Okay, so it would be basically three days. They arrive on the first day, they have the meet and greet.
They one or they all five?
All five, for us to narrow it down. Because to me, I, and again, this is just my personal opinion. I am not, I'm one of seven of us, but after speaking to HR and getting all this and other people out in the community as well, I just think that if we can bring all five in, and it's basically, it's the same thing that you all have gone through, you know, that you're familiar with, bringing them in, meet and greeting them the first day, the second day, it's a full-fledged day. And maybe, I don't know, Ms. Suzette, if you want it, or Rob, one of you, or both of you? Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
See, I'm sort of piggybacking on what Ms. Fisher said. It was my understanding, we took, we took 10 down to five.
Correct.
Then we did the interviews and we took 10 down to three. And at that point, we brought the community in using the advisory committees, using whatever interest groups were involved. So we were talking about, that was how I understood it. Now, I'd just like to know if what I understood is different than what is actually scheduled.
Actually, can you, there were more than--
Can I answer that question?
No, but there were more than three that came--
There were four candidates that came here and they had a three-day--
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, point of order, Ms. Morgan's question was not answered.
No, he just said he can't answer that.
He's talking about the finalists when Burke was done.
Correct.
I'm talking about the Ray &amp; Associates process that we signed a contract for. So to me, they're two different things. I mean, what I hear them talking about is the piece with the three, once we've got the finalists, bringing them in and going through the whole meet the community thing. I, I did not hear Ray &amp; Associates saying that we did that for the five, that we just interviewed the five.
Okay, so based on Ray &amp; Associates, after we did the, our interview and developed the questions, then the, it says, "Consult and meet with the constituents and staff interviews to discuss their roles." So that would be the next thing. And that is before bringing the finalists in.
But that's not with the candidates, that's with Ray &amp; Associates.
Can I, go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, and, you know, I feel like we're being very inconsistent here. For instance, the other day, when I brought up to set aside Dr. Savage's application and, you know, special meeting and a vote, because it seemed like there were several people had an appetite to include him, oh no, we're on Ray &amp; Associates, it's going to screw up the dates and it's going, okay. And I've heard people from the day of say, we, in the past, not just today, we hired them and this is it. And, you know, we sat there and Dr., what's his name? Caldwell, thank you, told us a couple of times when I was saying some things, well, we're experts and we have gone through this process thousands of times and, you know, yada, yada. And we all went with that. Now, all of a sudden, and I'm not saying I'm against this, but it just seems very inconsistent. It doesn't seem to me cost-effective to bring in five. I'm thinking we should do what we had planned and then bring in the final three, because it's a heck of a lot of money with the airfares and the hotels and they're going to, and then somebody's talking about, what's a meet and greet? What, I mean--
Well, everybody does that.
No, wait a minute, everybody does it, but I want to know what, what are we going to do? Have a cocktail hour? I mean, what, I know we're not going to do that. But what, what, when you say meet and greet, I have a, actually, that's the first thing. What's a meet and greet? They come to town, they all sit down to dinner, we don't have any alcohol, don't have any alcohol because we're a school district. That's what comes in my head. What's, when, Ms. Jordan, when you said we have the meet and greet and day one, day two, what is the concept? Tell me what exactly the concept is. Are they all together? Are we having dinner? Are we waving at them from, you know, as they disembark from the plane? What are we doing?
No, we're not waving. We would actually be picking them up from the plane. However--
Who's picking them up?
Someone from the district would pick them up. Well, common courtesy, I'm just, I'm just, okay, look, I'm putting this out there as one individual, I'm coming back to you, Ms. Gittens.
No, but--
And as far as the meet and greet, and it's like a welcome guest, in the past, and Ms. Fisher was a part of this, Ms. Morgan was a part of this, it was written here, Ms. Gittens is a part of it, well, you weren't a part of that part, but it's written here, it's documented, that they did have the meet and greet or the welcoming of the, all of them. So they were all together collectively and it was just a, you know, thank you for being here, conversation, nothing to do with whatever.
Well, explain, explain. See, that's what, I know what a meet and greet, it's hello, welcome.
There was a welcome, there was a welcome dinner with--
That's what I'm asking.
Board members and the superintendent. There was.
Please make a comment.
For all the--
Of all the candidates, yes.
This is with Burke.
Correct.
Yes. And I was, and I'm telling you what they did.
2011, 2000, yeah.
May I please make a comment?
Yes, please, Ms. Gittens.
Please. But the issue that I think we need to look at first, that brought us to this point, is the fact that we have not had enough, early enough, community and staff involvement. That is the common denominator. Bringing them in, having meet and greet, whatever. The bottom line is that is what we are trying to reach, in my opinion. So whether it's-- So whether it's, you know, carrots and celery or just water, that's down the line. But we need to decide what we are going to do to alleviate an issue that we have created by eliminating input from staff and from the community. That is what this speaks to as far as getting them involved. It's very simple that if they, if we get input at this time from this group of individuals, there's community input. The process is very simple. It can be done prior to the time that we were going to have them come in and meet anyway, an interview. So we could do that first interview and then do the final. But the bottom line is, when do we include the public and the staff? And all I've heard from Ray and Associates, oh, we're going to do that down the road. We're going to do that down the road. Well, we have created a firestorm by not doing it sooner. So this would take a day, one meeting with you guys, with these people that have reviewed, to just give a second set of eyes to what we've already done in choosing five people. And then from there, you decide whether you're going to bring them all in or what you're going to do. I'm saying that is the next part we need to address, what, how we can quickly include staff and the community.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Fisher.
So on August 31st, this board adopted a timeline.
Yes.
And I'm not clear on why, at this late stage in the process, we're discussing changing the timeline or the process.
Yeah, we're not changing the timeline.
Because I'm not, I'm not sure that this was included in the process. And I think it was Ms. Fisher who said we hired, was it you that said we hired Ray and Associates? And I'm not clear on why we're stepping outside the process that they have created for us. I am confident in the level of community engagement that we've had up to this point. And I am confident that Ray and Associates will walk us through an appropriate level of community engagement as the process plays out. So I am very uncomfortable substituting my judgment for them as experts and changing this timeline or changing this process. We've hired them to do a job. I would like them to do the job we're paying them to do. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I guess my question is, why doesn't Ray and Associates conducting focus groups throughout the community or with various people, why doesn't that meet the need to gather community input? Because they're actually, well, and not to say, but it seems to me, I would like to have an answer to the question of, why doesn't that meet the need to engage the community? Now, that's before we do the finalists. So we will have the feedback from those groups. Then we go on to, we select the three finalists, we bring them in and we go through this whole thing. I just need to understand, and I will make one other point. I don't believe we should ask the community to rate the candidates. I think that we should ask the community for their opinion, pros and cons. But I do not think that we should be using a matrix or anything that measures community response to any individual candidate.
May I respond to that?
Yes, I'm going to go. Ms. Gittens, let me, let me go in order.
It's answered to her question. There is not a numeric matrix.
Thank you.
Any of this, at all.
Ms. Fisher?
So early on in the process, Ray and Associates conducted virtual meetings with stakeholder and constituent groups to get an idea of what we were looking for in a superintendent. I was able to participate in one and that was the student group. It was extremely well-done. However, at this point, I think that they've been a little bit vague about how they're going to conduct the meetings with the different stakeholder and constituent groups at this point, now that we have five finalists, which I think should happen before we do our final interview.
Yes.
But I'm looking at the timeline and it says there's a first round of interviews with our finalists and then a second round. So I was just asking for clarification. Are they going to participate completely and honor their contract? Or are we involving our HR department? Which I would be happy with because I've been through this process before. We've been through it several times in this district. And historically, I think we have developed a template of a process and definitely invited and involved the community, including staff and other interest groups from, you know, from the community. So I'm just not sure on like where we are as we're heading in the home stretch.
Right.
And it seems to me to be very confusing.
Well, speaking to Dr. Caldwell after our meeting, he addressed the issue about, we as the board know the public. They do not know the public. So they would have no way of knowing how to get them involved or get them, this is what they said to me. So of course, I, when Ms. Giavennelli had mentioned that, I went to our people, who I know have gone through this and have information, to see what exactly that we did. So that way I can communicate with them on how it has been done here. So that way we can, and then Ms. Gittens was kind enough to put this together, get together to make sure that we are not eliminating anything. Because I know that cabinet and other people are like, are we never going to ever speak to these people? Are we never going to hear anything? We understand that, you know, the board makes a final decision. But are we going to be engaged, the same with the public? So we want to make sure that people do understand that. So because Ray and Associates are not here, inform that they don't have the ability to send this out to, who are those people and who are we picking?
Okay, but that was in continuation.
Yes.
That was not what they presented to us in the beginning.
Correct.
Okay? Because they said they could do that. So now, based on my own personal experience, we did have a welcome dinner for the finalists, which involved senior staff and the superintendent and the board. We also had the board room and the back room was open. And we had groups of, I think Ms. Gittens was one of them, groups of people from the school district and the community, parents, interested parties, who had an opportunity then to meet the finalists and speak with them, one-on-one. Now, I don't know how our current situation with the pandemic is going to impact that. But I think that that was an important piece. And it is important for the community to, you know, to be involved because this person will be the face of the district. And so we don't want them to rate them, but we want them to have an opportunity to take a look at them and give them, give us their input. So again, I'm just looking for clarity about the final steps of this because this is not what's happening, what was presented initially for the contract.
Right. Ms. Giavennelli?
So I would like to hear what has been done in the past. And I know, I heard Mr. Caldwell say, or Dr. Caldwell say, it's our decision, it's what we decide. And so I think we need to hear the options and make the decision. I am in no way interested in doing anything Zoom. I want to see these people and I think our community needs to see the people. So it needs to be something here. If they're, if they have safety issues and do not want to come here in person, then I question that person for this, they will not be a suitable fit for Lee County. So I would recommend that we see all candidates and our constituents and this public has the opportunity to meet all candidates as well. And I'd like to see how that looks. Thank you.
And keep it in the timeline. Ms. Morgan?
In response to Ms. Giavennelli, you're basically saying two visits?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, in response to Ms. Giavennelli, you're saying two visits. But let me go on and ask my questions. I actually make a suggestion. I suggest, given the comment you made about Ray and Associates and given the experience HR has, that we simply ask Ray and Associates to work with HR to create focus groups so that we can move forward. And take, well, anyway, that way everybody is doing what's best for the district.
Ms. Gittens?
What I was going to say, and going to, one thing. In going through the process, when you're a part of the committee, it is not okay just to have a meet and greet where you meet the candidates.
Oh, no.
It, there has to be a connection of information. And as I said before, there is no numeric part of this. And the first part where the selected individuals get an opportunity to look and, you know, make their notes about the candidates prior to meeting them would make it a lot better. I mean, at least they know what they're looking at and the people they're talking to. As far as the process previously with Ray and Associates, yes. They said, we will contact, a part of our process is to get with the community. What that looked like was a nine o'clock meeting here in this building.
No.
Okay? That is not sufficient. And then there were a couple of meetings on Zoom. They, I continue to say, we have to communicate to everyone, to all aspects of our community, not just those that are able to be at a particular time on a particular day. And we talked about it being at a school or something. We've got to do something different in order to get different input. We continue to get the same input from the same people and we have got to expand that. Ray and Associates, in my understanding, said previously and said this week when we met with them, oh, yeah, we will have the town halls and all of that. I want us to look back and see, how many people participated in those? What was the variety? How many school districts, school areas were actually represented in those meetings? It was not representative of 95,000 students. So to me, we need to do it differently the second time to get more input from more people.
Okay, so they did get a lot of feedback from a lot of people in this, in the district. We are on stage four right now, so, which is the candidate presentation. That's stage four with them. So stage four with them, based on what their information is, is that they are to assist the board in establishing the interview format and develop interview questions. We already got that part. Determine and coordinate constituent and staff involvement in the interview process. So that's, they're in that part right there. That's where we're at, right there, developing that. Which we could, as Ms. Morgan said, they can, if it's okay with Ms. Suzette Rivera and Mr. Dodik, work with them for that so we can get the community. Ms. DePree Bruno?
Just to add to what you're saying, Madam Chair, in reviewing the contract, there is a clause that specifically says exactly what she said in addition to the timeline, that they are there to determine and coordinate the constituent and staff involvement in the interview process if desired by the board. So I think there needs to be clear communication from the board to them of the expectations in terms of the constituent and staff involvement.
And I think that has been made very clear to them multiple times. So, multiple times. Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to go with what Ms. Morgan said and I think it was what Ms. DePree Bruno just said. We hired Ray and Associates. We pay, we're paying them good money. If we don't like what they are doing and feel that they are not involving community in the way we want them to, then we say, look, we need this, this, this. Here are some suggestions from HR. Here are some suggestions from a board member and others, or board members that have been through the process. But we can't, I mean, to make this all piecemeal and we're going to do this, but Ray and Associates is going to do this, that's just going to screw up the process. It's going to confuse things. The other thing I want to say is, I am very much against having a dinner and the schmoozing because I think that puts some board members, some candidates, some people at an unfair advantage. We, to me, I want to keep it on a level playing field. You know, what if I'm sitting next to candidate A? And, well, since they're all men, and he's just very charming. And I'm like, oh, what a charming man. And, yeah, we, I mean, some people have fallen victim to, I'm not, I'm not going to say what I was thinking. Fallen victim to the charm of some people that are shallow and they're just charmers. You know, we need somebody who is going to engage with the community. We don't want somebody that's, the community is going to look at the person and, wow, what a cold fish. We can't deal. We want that, but do we really want to muddy the waters giving, and you know, this is Lee County and 10 years ago, I was not involved, but I know what it's like in 2022. And you know that to have a dinner and have everybody schmoozing and the cards will be passed and I'll contact so-and-so and this one will advocate for you. That's what's going to happen. That's the reality. I know people don't like to hear it, but it's being done right now. There's all kinds of rumors. There's people jockeying for position, oh, we don't like the five or, you know. But, and I wonder about this whole thing that Ms. Gittens has presented. Select your top and bottom five. Well, we have five candidates. How, there's not 10. Does this mean that we want to open it to the public to say, hey, public, did you not like our five candidates? Why don't you go ahead and, will we start the whole thing? Is that what we're wanting? I want to clarify because, matter of fact, there have been rumors out there. There have been people that want to overturn. There are people in the community having, contacting everybody from, you know, the sheriff down to the, I don't know, layers or whoever. We're the board. We're the people that work with this individual. We're the people that were elected. This is a representative democracy in the United States. And I fully support public input. I especially support the input of district and school-based staff from the, from all levels. Bus drivers and up to school principals and the divisions. But the bottom line is, who are the people that are going to be working? And, yeah, the public needs input. I'm not against that.
Okay.
But let's not redo this whole thing because there are a few people that are unhappy with the five. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And Ms. Patrica?
So somebody, several of us, I believe you maybe, I don't know, mentioned having Ray and Associates work with HR to get this done.
Yes.
And I'm in full agreement with that. I would also recommend that they watch this meeting so they can hear the feedback of the board members. So that they, you know, the concerns of the board members are addressed. One thing I'd like us to consider is adding a Zoom component to this because Zoom is a reality going forward. So I hear what you're saying, Ms. Giavennelli, you want to meet these people face-to-face. But I want to see how they come across electronically as well. I remember conducting an interview for one of the associations I belong to where the person who ultimately won was the only person that was present electronically. And this was before COVID. This person couldn't attend the face-to-face interview. And that person's presence electronically far surpassed the presence of the others who were actually there physically. Am I making sense? So some people come across really flat electronically. I just, I don't know if we can have an hour meeting with the five, even though they're physically present here. Let's see how they come across electronically. To me, that's important in the year 2021, moving forward. And in addition, the convenience of these.
I do, too.
Oh, my God, thank you. In addition, the convenience of these. In addition, the convenience of these meetings and gathering more community input, like with DAC meetings, those being online, I don't, I don't know, just something I'm throwing out there for you guys to consider. Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli?
So, we can individually have our, our interviews with the, with the candidates. We did that with the interim. And, so, I'm not excluding that completely, but I am talking about the, the community's availability. And that is what, and, and I'm gonna bring up something that I think, Ms. Patricia, you can relate to. When they hired Chief Diggs, they did a roundtable, it wasn't a dinner, and it wasn't nobody passing cards. I actually got to meet your brother, didn't even know it was your brother at the time, very nice gentleman. And, so, I got to meet the people. So, can we please, let's hear what, what they've done in the past, and we can, I think, merge a couple of the things together, and let's get this, what time is it? 1:46, you got 14 minutes. Please, let's get this done. I think we're just, we're beating a dead horse, and I, quite frankly, I'm over it. This is why we have meetings that take all day long. I mean, there's no reason to keep talking about passing cards and having a dinner, it's not a big deal. Let's hear what, what the plan is.
It's a big deal to me.
And co-mingle and make a decision. I don't understand.
So, can I, can I just, okay, can I just ask, because I am gonna go back, what I, may I suggest that I go back, call them, as soon as we finish this, call them, ask them to watch the meeting, ask them to, in detail, send to all of us what their plans are for the next steps.
Because that wasn't communicated just on Monday.
After they, yes, and after they have communications with HR, and that way, we can have a clear vision of what's happening the next two weeks. Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Gittens.
I, I would request that we hear from Mr. Dodig and Ms. Rivera.
Yes.
Because they haven't had an opportunity to give their input yet, and they be, may be able to clarify some things for us.
Let's make my statement before they do.
No, go ahead, I have to log on anyway.
Okay, all I'm saying is, when I presented this, it was not in stone, it was for discussion, it was not for torpedoing, it was just for discussion and could be, you know, tweaked. I think the part about choosing the group of people, giving them an opportunity, it's not necessary that they do all 10, I just put it in there, that was nothing in stone at all. I was not assuming that they were gonna go back and start the process. If we got this group of people, they were given the opportunity to look at the applications of the five, they write down their comments about what they think about the five, they have a discussion whether Zoom or whatever as a group, and they give us that information that they came up with. It's as simple as that. It would be a second set of eyes to give us information before we move forward. It does not take a lot of staff time, it doesn't take whoever. The question was asked, who's gonna facilitate it? Ray and Associates could have, could facilitate it. I don't care. The problem is, just do this simplistic thing to include the community before we go and move forward.
Can I interject just one more thing? And the reason why we're at this point right now is because Ray and Associates did not convey or communicate what they're going to do next. So, y'all, please, think about that. I mean, we're having all this, and this is not, really, no reason, if, if it was communicated properly, that, we wouldn't be having this long discussion. Thank you.
Okay, so, 11 years ago, when this was done, the citizens, composition of citizens committees was chosen when you all decided what you were gonna do to search for a new superintendent. And the search committees assisted the board in getting to the four finalists, the five finalists. You're already there.
Right.
So, how you go about doing that, obviously, is your pleasure. I'm happy to have my division, myself, work with Ray and Associates to narrow your field down further, if that's what you're talking about. But that's when that, the citizens committees were involved last time. It was in January, and the superintendent wasn't picked until much later in the year.
But, Mr. Dodig, could you, or Ms. Suzette, after, because we have surpassed that, so...
When the finalists were picked, I think one dropped out, so four came here. And the itinerary was essentially a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Wednesday was a welcome dinner, not commenting any further about that. Thursday was an all-day session from 8:00 AM to 6:30 at night. And they met with initially the superintendent's cabinet, they then had the interviews with board members individually, there was a lunch, there was a tour of the area by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, then there were editorial board interviews with the news press. I'm not sure, after 11 years, if we're still inclined to do something like that. And then there was a community reception at 6:30 at night, that Thursday night. Friday was the in-depth interview process from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and there were five sessions where they rotated around. The first one was a full school board interview with the entire board, the candidates sat here. The next session was experience-based interviews with a team of folks, including principals, administrators from down here in the district office, possibly community members, we'd have to look and see what the makeup of those teams were. The third session was a mock school board presentation, the fourth was, fourth was a written communication, and the fifth, everybody got together and did a tour of this building. So, that was how things unfolded, and I believe, and I was an attorney here at the time, the board met possibly that evening to choose the candidate. So, and then directed Mr. Martin to enter into contract negotiations. So, that's how that process unfolded.
And that's very quick.
Yeah.
So, if they're able to have this communication with Ray and Associates and work together, this could actually work very smoothly, and we could get this accomplished with the community engaged in everything else, and pulling in, like, as Ms. Gittens said, certain amount of people into each one. Ms. Gittens?
Can I say, on that day with all the round-robin interviews, we were included. Each of us was assigned to a room, and each of the candidates rotated in throughout that room. So, we, as the community, had our time with them as well.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure how long it took after, but we had to give our input back to the board. So, I don't know if they met right then, that next day, to come up with it, but our input was taken in those final interviews.
Right, is that right, Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
That's right.
I just said it was.
No, I'm saying, as a board member, when she was taking that in, because you said you think so, and I just was reconfirming with her.
No, I'm talking about from the community perspective.
Okay.
I wasn't on the board.
So, I get, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Were all of those videotaped 10, 11 years ago?
No.
Probably not.
No, not the, not the individuals, there were some things that were videotaped, but the individual meetings that we were in, where the candidates moved in and out, was not videotaped, but all of our, that's when all of our notes and stuff were published in the paper the next day.
And they, it looked as if they had, they were alternating throughout the day, alternating the different groups, groups were being moved, as well as the candidates, and they had different rooms. So, they went to, everything was not held in one room, they moved to another room, and then they moved to the other room. So, it was a constant movement of, of people.
My question was based on the fact that in
We could record.
The intervening years, would that fly? We're, we're talking about community and transparency and having the community have, you know, I'm just asking.
Right.
Would it, would it fly in, in these intervening 11 years, that these individual rooms
Can accommodate?
Are not, are not videotaped?
Can accommodate those.
And I'm assuming those would not be open to the public, wouldn't they?
Well, Ms., they are open. Ms. DePree Bruno?
Individual room things?
Everything should be open to the public.
Yes, because it is open, it's noticed. And they did notice, everything was noticed, as need be. Ms. Morgan?
So, we're all trying to solve the problem. I think what we need to do is to get Ray and Associates talking to HR, and for them, within the next couple of days, to give us something before we meet next week to talk about. I mean, we have plenty of meetings scheduled next week, we can talk about whatever they come up with, but we're just going around now.
Right.
So, let's just, can we agree to delegate it
Yes.
To Ray and Associates and to, okay, Ms. Bruno?
Well, can I just ask one last question? And I will definitely do that, if I may, go ahead, Ms. DePree.
After you ask your last question, but I do want a consensus for the board because of the, you know, the discussions that you've had before. So, I'm on consensus that you want Ray and Associates to work with HR. Thank you.
Yes, I will.
And may I ask, with that, that all communication, that we're copied on all communication?
Yeah, I said that we would have them send everything out to all of us. So, yes, can we have consensus on that? Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, also, I do have, my one question is, do we want, or do I suggest, when I'm speaking to them, do we want the people here in person or by Zoom?
I think Ray and Associates makes that recommendation.
So, based on, based on Ray and Associates' recommendations, if that is doable for them, or if they think that's a better ideal, and with HR, we are in agreement that that's how we will go.
I think, I, I just think we need to hear what their plan is first. I mean, I don't wanna say to them...
That will be part of it, but the thing is, Ms. Gittens, the time...
Can I finish? I'm just saying, we don't wanna necessarily say, Ray and Associates decide if we're gonna, if they're gonna come or they're not gonna come.
That's why I'm asking you all what you want, because it, we are getting closer, and even speaking with our HR, they, as, as well as, as I stated in the beginning, there are multiple districts looking for people. So, that's why I'm asking that question, because the sooner we know, if we want to bring these people, they would have to then make reservations to have them here and give them time to be here, which we would still be in our, in our timeframe. Is that something that would be acceptable to you all, to have them in person?
And are you still talking about all five, or the three finalists, or whatever?
If, if Ray and Associates and HR have that conversation, they bring that back to us.
So, that's why I'm saying, that conversation needs to be had before, I would say, yeah, bring them, because you're talking about bringing five, or bringing two or three.
That's why I'm asking that.
So, that's why it's not, anyway.
Ms. Vaughn?
I just wanna remind everybody, the, the level of COVID that we are looking at right now as, as a district, we have increased it. I don't know what will happen in the next week. Also, the fact that, I don't remember where all of them come from, but several, they're coming from quite a distance, and I, I know I have a friend who is right now snowed in in Nashville. There have been incredible flight cancellations in the past weeks. I don't know a week from now what will be happening, but considering where the distance that some of them are flying from, and our COVID level, and the fact that, frankly, I don't want to be in a mass situation of people who are unmasked with, you know, what we're talking about, the meet and greets and, and, and all of that. And I know that there's some, that people have different views on it, but my view is, we have, you know, a certain level of COVID. I vaccinate it and boost it, but I don't want to be in that situation. And I know the comment was made earlier, well, if a person doesn't want to come here in person, then I have a, well, you'd have a problem with me, because, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna get on a plane and mix with hundreds of people that I didn't know. So, I, I really think that we need to take that into consideration, and I'm still for, because of the expense, because of the COVID situation, because of weather and all of the flight cancellations, I would rather see the five in Zoom. I think that will put the five out there, this, you know, as, as you bring up things to Ray and Associates, not all of us are on the bring 'em all in. Even if I'm the one, I want that put out there in, in the discussion. And my opinion is that via Zoom, for people who are quarantined, people who don't want to come in a mass situation, the Zoom is more accessible to all members of the public, including our own employees. So, I would like that included in your discussion, and I think it's important, once we're down to three for the final finals, that we see these people in person.
Okay.
Can we just make the consensus, five on Zoom and three in person, and make it simple?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it back in their hands and let them tell us what is the best avenue. So, based on our conversation, and I, thank you.
I had a question.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. That was one of my questions. I do have a couple of questions.
What would be the cost on this? I have a couple of questions, too.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. One was, it's the board's desire to stay on the timeline, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And three or five, you're gonna leave that up to our conversations. Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, thank you.
So, that leads me in, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
That leads me into, he raised a question, and, that made me raise these questions, actually. What happens if, what, I mean, what happens if somebody drops out? That's, you said that earlier, and that, and so, what, so we go down to four, we go down to, this happened in the interim.
Correct.
And I, I'll be honest with you, I don't, that, I don't wanna do that again. I want to see five. You know, and then I, that's the main question, is what happens if we drop down? I think we, we have never discussed it, Ray and Associates didn't bring that, didn't have that conversation, and, you know, that could very well happen. Just, they could be getting, they could get their job offer, and then we lose them. That's what happened, I think, before.
Correct. So, that's why the urgency is to keep on this timeframe, because we are ahead of everybody in Florida. Ms. Fisher?
So, that did happen in 2011, and there was a person who dropped out at the last minute, took a job in a neighboring county, and then we went with the four. I mean, it was...
So...
That would happen with, went down to two for the interim, and I don't wanna see that. You know what I'm saying? That's what I wanna see.
But, you know, then you have what you have, or we, we call it, you know, a failure, and then we start over again. I mean, that's the other option. But I think that, you know, the, the pool is narrowing.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, you're right, Ms. Fisher, and they're, they are definitely, and even when I was speaking with HR, too, everybody that I'm talking to, it is vitally important that we stay on task with the, the timeframe because of, and now, Pennella's just opened up, it will be opening up, too. So, we have to make sure that we are, keep it on schedule to make sure that we, we get some, so we don't have that issue of people dropping.
Right, because in the meantime, we have a superintendent right now.
Correct.
So, we can go through the process, and if it, if it does not work out the way we all agree that it should, we can just, you know, move on and start over again.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
I was gonna make a joke, but I don't think everybody gets my sense of humor, so I'm...
Go ahead, try it.
Well, I was wondering if we could save money by having the candidates stay in a hostel?
Do we have any here?
We can put some bunks up here. No, so...
Considering the person would be my boss, I'm reluctant to agree to that.
So, Ms. Gittens?
It'd be COVID-friendly, not...
I would be concerned about liability.
Okay. An attorney speaking.
I don't have that worry anymore.
Ms. Gittens?
Will the discussion with HR and Ray and Associates include the suggestion that I brought forth?
Yes.
I will certainly, I will certainly share this with them.
They will listen to the whole meeting.
Yep, and they're gonna listen to the meeting. I'm telling them to listen to the meeting as instructed. I will share this information with them.
Well, I will, let me just say...
Which they already, they already have, I shared them already.
Okay, I will adjust it and send it out again, based on the comments, which that was the purpose, was to hear what people had to say and make adjustments. So, I made adjustments to it, and we'll send it out as an additional, so please do not use the first one. first one.
Okay. And again, Ms. Gittens, this is something that Ray and Associates, as well as HR, they will come up with that, and will use what they've had before, what Ray and Associates has had, and whatever information you have, and comments based on what was discussed here.
But I, I think what you keep forgetting is, what I'm saying here is basically what was done before, but that's okay.
No, I'm not forgetting.
That's right. I will, I will give it to you corrected. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
And I just want to say to Ms. Gittens, thank you very much for bringing your proposal forward, because we've had a really good conversation as a result of that initiative. So
That's correct.
I'm, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. So when you get that correction, if you'll send that, that'd be great. Any other questions? Ms. DePree Bruno, you have any comments or anything? Mr. Dodik, Ms. Rivera?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate your time. You as well, always. Ms. Thomas. And I think that was the end of our agenda, and I will get right on the phone with them now and have this conversation.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, everybody, and have a great day.
Is the meeting adjourned?
The meeting is adjourned.